We're gonna start our workshop, we've got a full agenda here today and we're gonna try to move through it as quickly but as thorough as we can and I know that there's a couple of items on the agenda we're gonna knock off today, the last two items, and when we get to that point I'll talk to everyone about them, why we're taking them off and we're gonna push them through to the next meeting. Okay, but first, let's move forward to Budworth's parking issue. Let's get this thing resolved.
Good afternoon.
Hello, Mr. Ty Frye.
How's everyone doing? Last time I was here, I was here to present a special design for some municipal parking. At that meeting, there were some, I guess, confused questions about how many parking spaces are there per block, how are we gonna manage the parking. So since that time, I've met with town attorney and they've gone through and looked at the kind of the overall scheme of things in addition to the parking policy. First off, do you want to touch on the kind of the history of the...
Sure, I tend to agree with that so. I have copies of things here, if anybody wants to see them, I could make a brief presentation in prior meeting about the legal basis and justification that goes back to issue of the footplin deed that conveys that property that was in the name of the homeowners association previously. The footplin deed goes conveying from town. The legal significance of that is that everything else comes with that footplin deed, including covenants and restrictions that go along with that. It's within the covenants and restrictions that addresses the parking and in a nutshell, it says that every property shall have not have up to two parking spaces. And then those covenants and restrictions are still in effect. I think there was some misunderstanding that because the property now belongs to the town, it becomes the town street subject to the same issues that would be Main Street. You know, and it's different because of the way that the town got this. You can get it in the normal deed that you may get with your house, you got it as a footplin deed, but then it comes along with it. So having said that, then the question was, alright, so what does that mean? Because it also says in the restrictions that the big hall have that they're supposed to get up to two in close proximity to the residents. And we knew that there were issues and problems with that. We knew that some people have maybe as many as four cars and where there are no parking spaces to provide to every resident. Unfortunately, some of the work that had been done, there were more spots than I think everybody realized were accessible and with the work that Todd has been working on and some of the meetings, it looks like those guys have some good recommendations, but it is based in legal posture in such a way as we can proceed on any of the recommendations that Todd's made.
Very good.
So it's kind of to take us back and look at the history of the project. We're gonna look at the product design to show you how many spaces were allotted to the different areas. How many spaces are there today with the way it was built and modifications that have been done by the town? And then in opposed conditions, there's some of the modifications we're looking to do in the upcoming months. And then a separate discussion will be, okay, how do we manage the parking out there? How do we assign parking spaces and do it in a way that's gonna be the best for both residents and for the town? So as what we have here is this is a site plan from the early 1990s that shows the productized design. There were a total of 153 units that were per, a total of 314 spaces that were designed with this layout. That equates to, for the overall community, just that there were two spaces per unit. The issue is the way that the community is laid out, by proximity, the 100 and 500 blocks that are the upper right and left corners actually only have about 1.6, 1.7 spaces generally in their area. So there's heavier parking towards the lower half and down this area as well as in 200 and 600 block.
Gotcha.
So that moves to existing conditions. It's a little hard to see there, but the actual number of units that were constructed was 102. I believe what happened was this unit up right here was eliminated due to smaller maintenance issue, they had to dismanipulate the parking space. So the total number gets actually dropped by one. The actual total of parking spaces that exist today is 323. That includes all the ones that were built by the original developer as well as the ones that we installed several years ago right here along Ludbrook Street. That plays now to 2.1, more over 2.1 spaces per unit again for the overall community. However, based on proximity, the spaces that were added here benefited primarily these two lower sections. Even though they're essentially located, they're not as convenient to the upper corners as they are to the lower sections. So when we look at that, it improved the space per unit for the 200, 300, 400, and 600 block, but didn't really help us at all with the 100 and 500 blocks. So that takes us to what we're looking to do in the near future. Again, I probably basically displayed it not great here. Again, same number of units, 102. With the additional parking, looking to add approximately 10 spaces here and 13 to 14 spaces here depending on the final design. With that, that'll give us a total of 346 to 347 spaces, 2.28 per unit for the overall community. But by proximity, that would increase the number of spaces for 100 block over here to 42 spaces, which is just that there are two spaces per unit, 2.1. And the 500 block over here would increase to 72 to 73 spaces, which is actually a better improvement, about 2.3, 2.4 spaces per unit. Again, the other sections would be unchanged with the modifications we're doing right now. One of the other discussions we had, part of this process, was where else can we provide parking knowing that most families have more than two cars or what do you do when you have guests, things like that? So one of the things that was talked about was along the inner radius along here, there's nothing really prohibiting anyone from parking along there, along the street if they need to, with parking.
Because of the width of the street?
No, just...
Is it passing the width or...
What, I'm sorry?
The width of the street will allow for one street parking?
Yeah, the width of the street is somewhere around 29, 30 feet wide. So if we added, allowed people to park along that inner edge, that would take generally a parallel spaces eight foot wide by 20, 22 feet long. We could still have two 10-foot, 1 foot wide lanes to allow to a traffic along the roadway and still have more people park on that side. So we could either just through, you know, passing out leaflets or whatever, let people know that that's available for parking, or we could actually go out there and put in the tick marks like they're around South Street with that to designate parallel parking spaces along that inner edge. Again, for overflow if necessary. And I believe with that, we were able to get additional 18 spaces for here, for here, and 10 along here. So that's the parking proposal in terms of how to add parking. The next step I wanted to get into is how to department management, which I think is just a bigger issue to deal with here. While we look at here, we've kind of tuned in on the 500 block because that seems to be one that is difficult to try and manage. Option one would be to designate or mark spaces for each unit. And the first option we're showing here is designation of one parking space per unit. And what we would do then is we would designate a space that'll be marked on the asphalt and probably on the back curb as well for the unit number. We would try to assign one as close as possible to each of the units, with the understanding that with the layout that we have with buildings way back here, that we're not gonna get a spot right in front of everyone's house in every case. The remainder of the parking spaces that fall within that block will be unnumbered and will be considered an overflow or guest parking spaces for anyone to use. However, the spaces that are numbered would be specific to the neighborhood. With that scenario, we would have 22 designated spaces, 30 overflow. The overflow again will be on first, on first serve basis. The other thing with the overflow spaces is that overflow would be basically available to the entire community. So we're looking at this one just for block 500, but because they're not gonna be numbered, that we wouldn't have any real control over who would park there, someone would need to park in a different section of the neighborhood.
So in this scenario, you'd have one marked as close as you could to their residence.
Correct.
And if they had a second, third, or fourth car, there's no, it's free game to there's...
There's no guarantee.
Okay.
Yes, that's the downside to this, is basically only have one guaranteed space.
Gotcha.
And the additional spaces you would need, whether it be for a second, third, or fourth car, or for a guest, would be through a pool of shared parking ground with you.
Would this scenario risk an handicap?
Heaviness gap would need to be looked at on a per instance basis in the sense of if there's no one in this block that is handicap accessible or not required to provide any guest space because it's essentially a single tenant residential type stuff here. These are two simple lots. If this was a apartment complex or some other, where you had a shared parking lot, and it...
Oh, so we're dealing with units.
Correct. So if we had a, if someone in a particular unit had a handicap placard and requested a handicap space, we would be, there is space to provide that. When the community was originally designed, they did account for a certain number of handicap spots within each area. However, I would not necessarily go out and just put in those handicap spots because now you're actually taking away from spots that wouldn't necessarily be needed by a resident who doesn't have that need. So it would be, that would be evaluated on an added basis.
And these are, these are singles, single spots for the 500 block, for the 300 block and/or other blocks where they have two, or still single parking?
No, in this scenario, we would duplicate the same layout in every block.
Okay, so one designated parking spot for each unit.
Correct. Option two is very similar, it's just taking two spots and designate them per unit. Now with this option, again, because of the way that the community is laid out with houses, you know, way back here and the number of spaces along the right adjacent to the guest, what we would do would be to hold one space as close as possible to each of the units and then distribute the second space for each unit amongst the, what were the overflow spaces in option one. Again, trying to get them as close as possible to their unit, but with the understanding that that's not possible. With this scenario, we would have 44 spaces, one for each unit right next to the unit and one that's gonna be larger parking area, only eight overflow spaces for this section. So we have more than eight, families with more than two cars, where you have guests, now we're running into, into problems with the guest parking spaces.
And currently, where do they park at now? They park on Whitehall Road? Is that everywhere? And everywhere? Wherever they can find a spot.
Okay. So again, option one, option two are very similar, it's just option two is again assigning two spaces, one directly adjacent to or as close as possible to the unit, second one, again, as close as can, as we can, but within reason based on what's available out here.
So if we went back toward, to what the homeowners association policy stated with the two vehicles per unit, the homeowners would have to be acceptable to going back to what the homeowners association had, but when this, this thing is right. Our issue was before, because of turning it into town property, we couldn't designate those parking spaces to individuals because of the, it being town property. Now, because of looking back into the agreement with the homeowners association, it's possible that we can assign these lots.
It sounds like legally we can, and I believe the language was up to two spaces. So it wasn't even saying that we had to, or the homeowners association was required to provide two, it was up to two.
And it's a little odd anyway because I think this is one of the first, for my concern, first homeowners association, he's the property that we, as the town's taking over, to do this for, and figure a special exception to be able to apply or to allow that. I'm just using that as, that's what they have, those are the four in reference.
Yeah, and I don't know, and it'd be interesting to find out from a resident who may have been here for many years, but prior to the town taking it over, how were the parking spaces assigned? That's the piece that I have not...
No, no, they were numbered.
They were numbered. But I guess how did they address...
They were being managed by the homeowners association, but I don't know how they were being managed.
On the street, I thought?
According to Ms. Slagman.
And they, they really had to assign? So I'm curious, like this block here, since there aren't two spaces per unit...
One and a half was in her deed, it was one and a half, and she had never understood why the half existed.
Right, and I'm not sure how you assign a half a space. So I guess that's, it's definitely an interesting situation and I don't know if there's a perfect solution, but we're concerned that there's just different options. From an enforcement standpoint, or...
If I could just read that, probably two sentences. "Ownership of each lot shall entitle the owner or owners thereof to the use of not more than two permanent new parking spaces, which shall be as near and convenient to said lot as reasonably possible, together with the right ingress and address in the said parking area." Not more than two?
I think that half would be, that half would probably be considered as a use to be, when they put that one and a half temporarily, I think that's the wording between that word. I swear I would...
If you're a practical example, how do you, when both you want to use their half?
I think you've got, I think you've seen that car.
Mike, can you hear me? Yeah, Mike, yeah. Yeah, we could, that got that sound. It's a little...
From an enforcement standpoint, since there wouldn't be anything visible other than the designation of a space number in parking lot, it would have to be from a homeowner calling in and basically saying, someone parked in my spot. There's no way that, you know, the town official or someone will be able to drive out and see if there's a car parked here, it's not a break spot because of, you know, if they can see something, you know, evidence. So from an enforcement standpoint, it would still have to be the resident making a call or complaining and someone bringing out how to address it. The third option we have presented here is use of parking tags. With the parking tags, we could, we actually, we'll get two different parameters. One is to provide one tag per unit or two tags per unit. The way we would see this happening would be within the parking lot, there would be spaces designated as tag-only spaces, and those tag spaces would equal the number of tags that are painted out. The tags would not be associated with a specific spot, they'd be associated with a specific block, but not a specific spot. So the resident would be guaranteed the number of spaces based on the number of tags they have, the location of the space would be based on whoever gets their first and worst concern. So it'd be a first come, first served scenario. It would be easier to enforce because you could come out and see, okay, someone's parking a space that's designated as a tag-only space, they don't have a tag in their car.
I had some sleep, so I'm trying to think a little bit today. To me, that wouldn't really be a good, a good move for somebody that works night shift or someone who doesn't have the opportunity to get there before six o'clock or, I mean, that takes away the benefit for that person that has two little kids or that big, you know, I'm just using that, speaking out loud. So that wouldn't be a good option for someone that works that off shift or second shift.
So yeah, I, well, I, I kind of, you know, speaking out loud, I like to designate the two spots, one, one close, one a little bit further away. What's our thinking as far as enforcement goes? I guess it would be between the neighbors to enforce it, but how do we get involved in that? I guess that's, it still comes down to that point. They have to show some courtesy between the neighbors to say, listen, that's mine at 102 and you're parking your car in the 102, come on, help me out, you've got 103 and 103 over here, why are you parking 102? They have to show a little, what's the, what's the enforcement behind it? What's the...
Yeah, just as a prediction from real world, what I think is going to happen is somebody's gonna be self-enforced, because if you pull in and somebody's in the parking spot, what are you gonna do? You're gonna pull right behind them and park them. That's just going to...
Yeah.
Well, it may cause arguments, but what's going out there right now is causing units and drivers too, so it's not like it's a perfect world. That, and the other, but the other thing to probably, to be, is saying, you can send something out there.
It's initial term request that was first got in place and it windled itself out pretty much, wouldn't you say that? So it's really the same setup as term request. I would think that, again, speaking out loud, if we do this, we should probably do it on a trial basis and that this, the homeowners know that we're doing this in the benefit for them, that things don't work out right, we revert it back, just let chaos continue. I'm just using this as not a 90-day or some kind of a trial.
Yeah, yeah, but if we're going to put the cost into a permit or pay us for their car, the placard, it can't be something for 90 days because that's gonna cost administrative. And I'm thinking, just my view here, if we're up to 2.8 units per household, if we had the 100 block and everyone got two 100-block permits, and then if they're in front of their house or if they're four doors down, there wouldn't be any argument because they're still gonna park in this 100-block area and the 500 block gets the 500-area permits if you're thinking of two permits per household.
So you're looking to do it in a combination where you have a designated spot to go with the tag?
Or that's mine, you could either have a designated spot with 101 and then a 100 for that lot. And I, just a thought to, so you won't have someone in the 500 section having parked in the 100 section, or that person blocking the car because they didn't get their spot that day, just, you know...
Commissioner DeBocci.
Yes.
If I could just add, one of the things, if you think about it, if you designate tags specific to 100 block, 200 block, et cetera, people oftentimes lose their tags or sell their cars. So what we do with term quest is we just have them numerically and they're up into the 500s at this point. It's self-enforcing out there. If you're in a situation where someone, if you have tags specific to the 100 block and they're all marked 100, what do I do when somebody sells their car? I might, it's forcing us to keep a large inventory of stickers for the 100 block, stickers for the 200 block, 300 block, et cetera. So is it, you know, sort of saying that that would increase our inventory of stickers?
Right.
I think if you put their house number on that curb and one, let's say, one close to the house and one over here for them, that's all we can do. I mean, we're, we're, right, we'll overanalyze this thing, which we have.
We have.
It's gonna drive us, listen, we've done more than, we're trying our best and we can, we can know, we know now that we can give them two parking spots within their block, one right at their house, one a little bit further away from their house, and then it's fair game on all these other, other spots.
Back in the same situation you had when you had homeowners association.
Yeah, it's the same, we're just getting, we're taking them back to 1988.
With additional spaces.
Just like one, we're rolling them back.
Well, the cost for the additional parking spaces, we've estimated about $2,000 per face is what the construction cost would be, plus with the installation of all the pavement, we're gonna produce additional stormer maintenance, which would be about another 10 to 15,000 dollars. So we're looking somewhere in the range of 50 to 60,000 dollars for the car costs of installing the additional spaces here and additional spaces on the east side. The cost of actually...
Together fifty or 50, so 100 grand?
No, 50 total.
Okay, 25.
It'll be more, a little more on the side because there's 14 spaces versus 10, but across the, approximately 50 to 2,000 dollars. The cost of actually striping or putting in, parking the numbers, I would think that'd be minimal, probably not in the house by the time it works out, with just some cans of paint and substances to be able to put the numbers on the pavement or crew line.
So you're talking less than, above 25, less than 125,000 if it solves the problem?
Way less than 125, because I'm talking 50 to 60,000 dollars to fill all my four spaces.
Seventy-five thousand?
Yeah.
Oh, you have me at hello.
Lou, would we be able to fund this out of major facility or would it be funded out of general fund?
It would be funded out of general fund. This is the parking. We probably do amendment to the general fund using un, un-signed, unbalanced.
Well, listen, we'll make a decision at the next meeting on Wednesday night.
I think that what we'll do, and Todd has suggested it, we'll actually do pavement markings on the parallel parking. We want to actually designate, that way somebody can actually see that they're parking. And I would probably, I think there's a center line on that road, if I do the center line number, allow people, and then 10-foot lanes. And then put yellow on any place we don't want them to park, and we really have clearly delineated where we want to park them.
Yeah, right now, there's actually striping, it's kind of faded, there was one there and on the other side, which we would want to maintain that, we wouldn't want to park in that.
Yeah, I'm saying, I, I don't like to get little tags, I'd rather just have the numbers and...
That was gonna be my next question. What, what are the car gonna have that's gonna equate their number where they park? Are you having to designate?
That's where, if we don't have some sort of tag or sticker, it's gonna be based on the resident just knowing that they're using their face, and if someone's in your face, then you have to find out who it is and get them out of there.
And that can be difficult, and I used the sample with, well, up in high school, each kid, we had to park and each kid had a decal, and of course, they were very good at putting the decal. And in the morning, we would go out there and basically, and we would see the decals out of there. The kids who did not have decal, we always got them a little note, and that sort of made a change that they did not drop to schools, park where they didn't park. But with adults here and out there, I don't know what we could do. Or even if you had a drill, an officer went out there, reminds them to look and see what happened.
Probably have a sticker in the car, same match as there.
Well, that's why I didn't know what it was.
Or, now, the hospital uses some kind of a tag that they, that they had when they're hanging from their mirrors that identified people that worked for the hospital. And I remember we was monitoring the parking, and it was parking on Main Street, and then they wanted them to use the parking lot behind the pizza place, so the cars started riding out looking at the tags hanging from the mirror. I'm just using...
What is term quest use?
The little, the little numbers from the address.
But no, no, it's not the address, it's just a numbered sticker. So it doesn't really...
Exactly the numbers.
Yeah, exactly, it doesn't, it's not associated with a, house number 38 doesn't have number 38 on it. So, and it's not, it doesn't have anything to do with the streets or anything, or it's consecutively numbered.
And it's self-believes.
And they, self-believes, yeah.
But they do have a sticker or something on their car?
Correct, it's in the windshield.
It just identifies a thorough local park.
That's correct.
Anywhere.
And what happens is they, they come into administration and they say, I live a term quest, so they're issued two stickers, and they also get a visitor tag. The visitor tag hangs from their rear mirror, again, they're consecutively numbered, nothing to do with the address. And the only cross-reference to the address is if you come in here, you can see in the file that number two and number three were issued to this particular address. But where they park is where they park.
Usually they park near their place.
Right.
They would park elsewhere, number one.
But you were saying that managing the stickers, is that an issue for the town in terms of making sure that you have enough, or is that not?
Well, we continue, we, we just keep the inventory up, we buy about 500 at the time. My suggestion is these are a really lovely yellow, and I think that front porch would be in bright orange, so that we just designate what neighborhood they were from.
Mr. Lemon, you had a comment, maybe you can help us.
I like your idea of paint the numbers and move on. What I wanted to ask is, is there any movement as far as the sidewalks go? People were concerned about the sidewalk from there, between there and Redners.
We haven't discussed anything with the sidewalks tonight.
So we're gonna take a walk on that one.
Any other comments about the parking? Thank you, Todd. And real quickly, on the sidewalks, Dan, I think we own that land, we own the little section over there, yeah?
My turn.
Yeah, we own the little section of land that we were gonna take a look at, but I think the developer, there was the, the land that the residents were talking about that we needed at the sidewalk was owned by a developer, and until he develops that land, it's farmland, until he sells that land or develops it, he's not required to put a sidewalk in that. until he sells that land or develops it, he's not required to put a sidewalk in that 100-foot section or 200-foot section or whatever.
Well, it's farmland, I would never look at it, but why can't you go to the landowner and get permission to put a sidewalk, and I would assume the town would pay for it.
Well, we did, we did look at that, in fact, Lou and I had a little discussion about some temporary, I want to call it temporary sidewalk, that track mats material I showed to the administration office. We never really have gone any further with it, but I'm hoping that the developer will get a bite and get some action there, so we can get that done. All right, next item, Mr. Mike Devine, government channel.
Well, I heard you're using that.
Okay, lay it on us.
I kind of hold this project, and I spoke to a chunk of fire we're being installed in the server room, it's in this closet. So what we have now is the town is going to get the equipment if they want to continue their work, that they give us a channel and a content.
Okay.
What you need to decide is if you want to pursue this, is what you're going to do with it, because it's a 24/7 Route 65. It's your channel, you get it all that way.
And the equipment's personal?
Well, the equipment's not private. This is a proposal, actually, I got it on the show, we got a grant through Comcast. The grant is $65,000 to talk to Chris Conover. This is just a proposal from DPC that Chris had Scott Huffman do. This is basically the equipment he wanted, so when I started looking at this, the big end is production studio where you have a staff and you do it all. And to give you an idea, I spoke to a very nice lady, Kelly Jarra at Harper County. She has five people full-time do their channel, they're paying $750,000 a year budget. That's the big end. The small end is...
And what do they do with that channel? Are they selling shows or selling ads or...
No, it's government access, it is completely nonprofit, public stuff. You can't advertise, you can't take, you can't do info commercials and make money around it.
Yeah, it's government.
It's strictly nonprofit, and she told me that like over and over.
Yeah, they have things on it like their Fourth of July parade and things like that on there, right? So they're very involved.
Okay, so maybe what, the COVID stuff, and they've got a big production. The other end is, I mentioned it, is being able to broadcast whether live or recorded and then edited and put out there for town leaders. I think that is sort of the intention at the beginning. What are you going to do for the other 800 episodes a week, whatever it works at too? So part of that is putting in a little box, a server, and feeding stuff out there. So I think this proposal here shows that they can give you some stuff which includes news, sports, weather, traffic, financial, favorite stuff. I hadn't seen this. Harper County's invited us to come down and look at what they got. This does not include cameras, and I spoke to this gentleman, Scott Huffman, who's on vacation right now, but I spoke to him this morning, and he said, we're looking at two cameras. Because one of the things that I've heard in here is the camera we're using now, we're putting on YouTube, shows the commissioner. It does not show who's sitting here, other than the back of her head, and it does show the wonderful staff over on that side.
Or the audience. Or the audience.
Or the audience. So we actually have, before I knew about this, for example, putting up, a bullet up in the ceiling here pointing this way, one back here pointing this way. So you can do that. As far as getting a channel out of, I spoke to Rick, over to Rick, my camera, so we can use that camera. And once we get the stuff in here, don't take any signal that we give to the camera, you probably don't want to use that much camera. So the cost for the cameras, they're saying two stationary cameras is about 20,000. So between this and the two cameras, you're pretty much eating up your 75,000 dollars. The big question is, who's going to do it? And like Kelly flies me over and over, don't start this until you have a plan, which means that the public access channels have a very bad reputation, because they'll put one thing on there and it never changes. So it's content, what do you want to put on?
Understand.
We went to AmeriMale, it's on Ocean City, that's, I think they have the same setup, it's a government channel, but then you can actually see their meetings from last week.
Yeah, and they play reruns, a lot of the counties, I mean, counties do, and constant, you know, what's coming up next or... So we did receive the $65,000 grant, or is it something that has to be tried?
We never received any money.
But Comcast has that to offer.
Yes. The equipment that goes back there, which I've sort of said, go ahead and install, and it's the equivalent of putting a modem here, put a modem in, as you can connect to Comcast and you get feedback. That's the stuff they're going to put in there. Everything else is whatever you want to do. Here's one example, this is the system, Harper County, their cameras are more expensive at a margin. So really, I'm just throwing it out there, what do you want to do?
Well, I can tell you, I'm not sure what we, from my perspective, I don't know what we want to do. We've always talked about having a feed for our minutes or our meetings, but, you know, you can also get that off the YouTube channel, so that accomplishes what we want to do. But if we wanted to get to the point where we're filming our Fourth of July, our Labor Day festivities, our fall fest, ribbon bunnings...
They can do YouTube too.
And they could be.
You can just put all that stuff on YouTube.
So it's a, it's a lot of money, and I don't want to get to the 750,000 a year number, but listen, does this give us the fiber optic?
You get, the fiber optic's here.
It's here, now, are we hooked in?
No, that's the stuff that they'll put in, and that fiber, the question you asked was, do you cannot use a printer? It's only for this machine.
Okay.
Now, this is Hartford County, so you're looking at that price, has Cecil County looked at anything like this?
They only do it in...
They're, I know, they're, yeah.
They don't have to set it.
I think Michelle may be able to shed some light on that, I think they were approached in, Michelle, what did...
I mentioned before the meeting, Cecil County's council manager, he helped set this up for Hartford County originally, when they first started it. So he's got the background, and I was just, I had talked with him a little bit about it, he's got the experience.
Why did Cecil County, didn't Cecil County decline to do as a county?
Yes, when it was still a commissioner county, then it's a commissioner government.
Rec Center TV channel, Rec Center, can we check?
That's too much money for two.
That's a lot of money. Any questions for Mike? Thanks, Mike. Gene Minter, I know you have two quick zoning amendment requests.
I just wanted to run these past the board and see if it's something that you'd like to pursue. R2, letter back to the redus of America, I just... The first is from, Lola Michael.
Kay Michael.
Kay Michael. And the question, the request had to do with, they have a property that was originally built as a residential single-family home, and it's in an area that is highly commercial, right next to Gilbert Bar's Warehouse. And the zoning, commercial zoning has cracked in over there, and the problem with that is under the C2 zone, the property can be used for commercial purposes, but not for residential purposes. So if they, they could live, if they were grandfathered at one point in time because they lived there and had an office there, but they discontinued the office use, they can continue to live there as non-conformant use. But if, should they move out, then the property would have to be used for commercial purposes. We're going to have a mixed-use zoning allowed in the C2 zone that would allow residential and commercial use together in the same building. So their request, and it made sense to me, it was something that, that I think needs to be addressed. The request is basically, if you have a property that was built originally as a single-family home, to allow the owner occupant to live there and run a business out of it. And I don't see, I don't see an issue with that, if we wanted to change it to allow an existing single-family home to be used as an owner-owned residence and business by the owner.
Why was it, why was it changed to C2 to begin with?
I think that when you're drawing the zoning line, there was other commercial areas next to it, so it just started creeping this way towards the west. And I'm not sure if they had even requested the C2 zoning for future, or they sold it and it would be worth more, I'm not sure. But regardless, there's other single-family homes along Route 40 that are sold into old holdouts from...
Yeah, we were just talking about that.
And this is a great example, you've got three or four, I know of, houses that are now C1 or C2, and yet they're residential houses, so if they move out, if they wanted to sell their house as a residential house, they can't.
Right, it's a non-conformity, and how the non-conformity works is, I think if it's abandoned more than 180 days, then it has to, it has to be consistent with the current setting, you have to use it consistently with the current setting. If someone moved right in and it wasn't discontinued for a period of time, they could maintain that non-conformity status, but this, this would enable them to not worry about that until, because eventually probably what would happen is the house, the property is sold, somebody might remove the house and then build a commercial building on the site eventually. But in the meantime, to allow sort of small commercial owner occupants in those, I think makes sense.
You'll be able to work that language?
Yes.
So what happens on those properties, like on Route 40, for example, if, if I sold my house and I wanted to sell it as, in real estate, and says, listen, you're moving, but I do have a person that wants to move into this house as a residential house, you're saying it's okay?
If that's what you would like it to be, they don't have to have a business?
Yes.
Then, then we can do it that way.
That's kind of my feeling, I mean, it's existing, existing use, it's a house.
The pros and cons both ways, to give somebody the opportunity to sell it both ways.
I don't know if there's any cons, but I probably don't, it's sort of their old, their holdouts from when it was mainly residential, you know, out there was a...
Sure.
Area.
Is there any, is there anything that would put the town, you know, get them in a jackpot or anything like that?
The only thing we make sure is that they would still have to, need to require all street parking requirements for any commercial use that they have there, it's permitted in the C2 zone.
I'm fine with it.
Here, tweak yourself some language. Okay, so that was one.
Okay, the second one, there was a request from Janet Harden. And the thing, when you copy these letters, I wasn't sure if I...
That's one I got from Miss Paul. That one's, is that the massage?
Yes. She requested to, for us to amend our language to allow therapeutic massage as we would any other type of office use, office service, professional office use. Currently, massage is permitted in the, massage is, as a business, is permitted in the C3 zone, which is this area here in dark red.
By 95.
By 95, it's the highway interchange area, by special exception. The applicant has asked, would you consider changing it, permitting it as a doctor or any other professional office, which would be permitted by right in the residential office zone, the C1 zone, C2, which is highway commercial, C3, which is permitted in the business industrial, planned due to development, business park, account center zones. In looking at it, the, I looked at adjacent, the county and Northeast, they're the two nearest entities that regulate massages, see how they regulate it. The Cecil County includes massage in the regulation of adult entertainment, and it's permitted only in the business general, business intensive zones by special exception. And it has to be 1,500 feet from schools, churches, and hospitals, or similar institutions for human care. Northeast also includes massage under adult-oriented commercial enterprises and services. This excludes massages that are part of a hospital, nursing home, or healthcare professional office, or those that are part of an exercise club, athletic club, or health club spa.
So they added some additional language.
But massage parlors are only permitted in their highway commercial, light and heavy industrial centers by special exception, and their distance requirements are 1,500 feet from hospitals, churches, or schools, 1,000 feet from another adult use, and their adult uses include tattoo parlors, bail bondsman, you know, they have a broad range of adult uses, and 500 feet from residential uses. So they have distance requirements from institutions, residents, and from each other.
What are you recommending?
I, the planning permission was made, we are these two requests, and I didn't get a feeling that they were interested in changing the ordinance, but I wanted to, before we go through the whole public process, if you wanted to amend the ordinance, I wanted to get a feel for the board's position on this.
I think what we've always, certainly is, is very obvious that the concern was the word massage being associated with the adult industry, and I think that that shows with the county and Northeast and so forth. If you, could you add an adder to that, if it's a licensed professional or...
Well, you can only perform massage if you're licensed, you cannot get a, you cannot perform massage in Maryland.
Get your license in Maryland.
Well, then help me understand where the confusion is. I can't, you can't tell me that the, the, I don't want to say it, the, I would assume that, I'm trying to think, the Apple Spa that used to be up there on the...
Fletchwood Road.
I'm trying to think what route it was, Fletchwood.
Fletchwood.
Fletchwood. It was called the, it was in the county, it wasn't in the town. Well, I can tell you a lot about it. Charlie had an undercover one.
Yeah, you're right about that.
And the only, you know, some of the concern I have is, you know, just having noticed that Millville Zellware is banning massage parlors.
Who is?
Millville Delta, it was just in the paper on August 12th, just, they were concerned about, I guess, the amount of resources needed to control and, and then eliminate the problem, massage parlors. So they had a, owner of a massage parlor in Rehoboth was arrested on prostitution charges as part of an investigation of two parlors in the city, and then the owner also owns several other establishments in middle town locations. And so you have a couple of problem people that...
We could have that with physicians.
Right.
Or any healthcare profession also.
So...
I'm not, I'm just...
The only concern would be is, you know, how you, how you make sure that you can regulate them, and, you know, I've, I think we've had a problem with other places that had opened that weren't even advertising as massage parlors, and they're all closed, yes. But police, I don't know, I'm not sure what the police would have to control something like that.
But didn't you say they have to be licensed in Maryland? Not the local...
You could go online and be ordained for...
No, no, no.
I mean, but I'm saying, what is the licensing recommendation?
Yeah, there's a lot of licensing requirements, and the licensing agency does maintain a, they're required also to have a criminal background check, that one, yeah.
It's the CPR, I have a friend that actually does it, and it is legit where she works, and I'm, I wouldn't want to discriminate against any business unless it's, it's public safety.
And I think that's the problem, is how, if you are made aware of a problem, if you find out from, you know, the massage lift, you can see the website, that someone's been sanctioned for inappropriate behavior, then what do you do? How do you shut down? What's the, how do you control this? And...
Can't do that. What's that? Just shut them down. They break, they break a token, they break anything.
Or you can really, just like for any other...
You close down the business if they break, if they break the law.
Mrs. Harden?
Yes, sir.
And I'm assuming you had some comments about that, real quickly?
Um, yes, and I honestly don't know where to begin, because... And it comes from the State Department of Health, the Board of Chiropractic and Massage Therapists, Therapy Examiners. And you have to take, and that license has to be maintained. Every two years, you need 24 credits, continuing education credits. Six of them have to be in ethics. And, um, six, okay, you have to have ethics, medical, and I'm sorry, but I didn't bring my letter.
No, 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 I'm sorry. I think, I think you answered enough for us real quickly.
I haven't.
Jean, I know that the European Health Spa here in town had a masseuse. How did that happen?
Because if a spa, if a massage is subordinate to another main use such as a health club, it's different. It's, it's, the health club is a primary use. It's not massage is a primary use.
So the business you're looking at would be, what would it be?
It would be therapeutic massage. Therapeutic massage is not spa massage. I mainly worked with Dr. Alan Shiner in his chiropractic office for six years. He recently moved right next door to where I want to put the office. And the way his office is organized, the landscape of the office, there's not enough room for him to designate a room for therapeutic massage. Therapeutic massage solves problems, lower back pain, shoulder pain, neck pain, leg I took over 900 hours of schooling to get this. I'm licensed in Delaware.
I don't think, I don't think you need to go on. I, I think where our dilemma is, is how we can associate your business a little different than the, the non-legitimate business.
Exactly. And I, I understand that. And when I first heard you talking massage parlor, I was, my head was...
I know you would be. But that's the way our, that's, that's the way that our, our ordinances are written. And we got to figure out the, how we can specify directly to allow this business in. Because I think this would be a fantastic business for us to, to have in the town. But we just got to protect ourselves so we don't get the other type of business.
And I understand that. It's, and, and case in point, up until eight years ago, Delaware licensing for massage therapists was under their gaming commission until it was moved over to the Department of Health. And, and it, it's a, it's a tough idea. Therapy, therapeutic massage creates a healthy situation. I don't know how, other than in the ordinance to say licensed massage therapist. And for you then to be able to say to the person who wants to either open a said business is to check their license. You can research on the website that the license is current, that the license is, doesn't have any...
Disciplinarily.
Problems with it.
Listen, I think we've got the best on it right now. We've got the best right here. Ms. Jean Minder, you'll figure out how we can get that written.
It, it do have a, as part of the website, the Board of Chiropractic and Massage Therapy Examiners, they will list licensee, persons with licenses who have been disciplined from. So not to counter what you're saying, but just because their license doesn't, they're not going to violate it.
Yes.
So you have to, we would have to make sure. And the reason I'm saying that is because we've got Northeast and the county around us that regulate differently. So you want to be careful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, give us a recommendation. Thank you. Thank you, Jean.
So my head doesn't have to respond.
No, no, it doesn't. All right, our next...
The criminal background check, by the way, was just enacted this year. February of this year is when they started requiring a criminal background check.
Yeah, that'd be perfect.
Delaware required it two years ago.
Very good. Well, we'll see what we can do.
Well, I, I hope so because I, I enjoy doing the work. I'm situated between a chiropractor and a family practice. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we've got our loitering ordinance. I think.
I think I sent a... The mayor suggested that the town pretty much copied Bel Air's.
Yep.
This was, is there a way of...
I know. We'll share, we'll share.
Twenty-one, eighty-seven, so. And this does, and then of course, council has made some suggestions, so this...
Yep.
This includes those suggestions, but I wanted to point this board that this is actually, with the exception of how we deal with parking lots, is mostly dealing with commercial premises, not just anywhere on the side. Actually, commercial premises. That's what it was designed for, and I think that's probably why it was a challenge. Because if you have a commercial operation and so the public, basically you can ask the public to leave, close up, or, you know...
If the stores are shut down or the retail's shut down, you can get them to move.
Sure.
So...
I don't know. I, at least I wanted you to bring, I gave it to the board head con to review. Do you have any comments or questions of council? You can do it. And then I'll bring it up for introduction at the next meeting. If it's okay.
John, you reviewed it. And I think what it does is it's going to give the, give us a little bit of a tool to, uh... I don't know what it would just to move people on if they're not supposed to be gathering at that point?
Well, I think what it does is it allows some, perhaps for example, public parking lots that might be supporting local businesses and just for general parking in the town, to be designated closed during certain hours and open during certain hours. In a bad rate case, and we could designate certain hours where the parking lot might be closed, then, I mean, if you chose to do that, you would limit the activity within that parking lot. You may not see any reason to do so, but just for example. The only thing is, what it doesn't do is go and address streets and public sidewalks. And I don't know that you can.
What about public, what about parking spots during, during hours? When a business is open and you've got water going on, is this strictly for after-hours?
No, it's, it's too much.
Anytime, right.
We, we're parking spaces for people.
Say they're, say they're in American Home Hardware, loitering, just standing around and stuff.
Well, that's a, that's a private lot, that's quite a private...
Well, I think a couple of the, the unique things in it says, you'll be unlawful for any board person to loiter on or about any commercial premises during ordinary business hours after having been requested to leave by the owner, the operator, or authorization of such premises. So if, if they're around a business...
They're on a sidewalk. On a business, I don't know that it's within...
That's going to be, and that's what's...
Well, our, but our, our town ordinance states that sidewalk, or doesn't belong to the property owner.
Sidewalks, it depends on the, how the property is described. For example, on East Main Street, sidewalks belong to the adjacent property owners because the state highway, right away, it's perp face, perp face. But, and on North Street, it's similar, just it's gate perp face, perp face. But they're still public sidewalks, open to the public for general use. So if somebody's standing on the sidewalk out here, and they're not creating a disturbance or other criminal act, and it gets them to move on, and they wouldn't, you probably would be not very satisfied with a firm legal footing to tell them to move on subject because you didn't like them.
Conversely, I think if they're covering the entry lane of business...
That might be different.
I think that probably falls within, within the statute, in such a way as to obstruct the business and obstruct client, customer, in and out of the business.
That's going to be a judgment call by police, not by the board. Police actually have powers of arrest and responsible, so they would make the call on that.
Well, when it's saying though, it shall be unlawful for any person to loiter on or about any commercial premises. So can you take that about being the sidewalk?
Well, that's going to be the interpretation.
It's going to be the interpretation of the law there.
Now, is there any spark of interpretation? That's, that's their call. They're the one that makes the arrest, responsible for the arrest, testified in court. So the board has no, has no dictation of what police would do.
Now, it also says unlawful for any person to trespass on any public parking lot or other public property posted.
Yeah, it says posted. People have to be given notice. Of course, you take, for example, the Howard Street parking lot, post conspicuous notice, notice that that lot is open or closed at certain hours, or certain condoms are in certain hours prohibited, then this would be the enforcement part of it. So we have to go and do that after you pass this word through this actually, where we make by resolution and say, well, we're going to close that parking lot from two o'clock. And then, well, you got to allow first, you have people that might come out of there in the hands, and then go down and get their car. But let's say three o'clock till six o'clock, you keep it closed.
But that's used for a lot of the apartments that are there as well.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You'd have to give, give all of that consideration. You wouldn't close the parking lot if people park in because they live there. And so, but you might want to say you can't play music here for certain hours too. You could, if it's that, not, if anybody does that...
But is parking a car trespassing or walking through their car?
You can just say that.
No, I mean, that's, that would...
I would like to do that.
Yeah.
I don't know why Bel Air has this provision where somebody playing camp, a cassette player on parking lot, or eat food. Something must have happened over there for them to pass words like that.
Well, I, I'd say that...
If they want to get out here and open a box lunch and eat, they're not going to get arrested, you know?
No, I, I think it's what it's saying is, from a, from an after-hour standpoint, if you got your, your blast of music, I would assume that that's where it may be coming from, but I do agree with you.
I don't think we ever had that problem.
I don't think we ever had, no.
Right.
Well, listen, I, I guess it's a little bit of a downer when you're, when you're bringing the, about the sidewalk side of things. But once again, it's going to be the interpretation of who's, who's moving the ordinance. And I think that there is enough here to hang the coat on. Certainly a shot. Any questions or comments?
So the only thing to consider is that there are many people currently who stay on the street, hang out, if you want to call it that, who live there. They don't like it in their apartment because it's hot, so they're out front, socializing. Couldn't arrest those people because they won't go back in their house. You have to beat that temper from somebody who is not from the area, hanging out in front of a business. So the council has to differentiate that. There's, there are a lot of people that hang around downtown that live in those places.
And I think our police force knows that.
Well, they do. They do. Some people, you drive by and they're sitting out there talking, you're not going to do anything with, and somebody else interrupts them, well, they might stop and say, what are you doing here?
That's true.
I'm visiting my, my sister. You know, nobody cares.
Very good. All right, any comments?
We have to start somewhere.
Very good. I think it's a start, good start. Thank you, Lou. All right, the next thing on our agenda, we had a... Had a resident come in and talk about the town adopting a resolution for In God We Trust. And I think that everyone had a copy of that to take a look at. And just kind of some discussion in general because we are either going to move forward with this next week or just move on without it. But, you know, In God We Trust was adopted as the official motto of the United States in 1956. So I think that it's one of those things that it is part of our, part of our, it's our motto of the United States. But the one thing that we do is we pledge to the flag at every meeting. I think we're showing from a town perspective that we believe in God, we trust in God, and I continue to strongly believe that. And I think that most of us, or all of us here do that also. I don't have an issue at all proclaiming our In God We Trust, or our love for God, or however we want to state it. But having it posted, I think the request was to post it actually in our meeting room. We've never really posted anything in the past, and kind of my feelings on it would be not to physically post anything. We have never posted, but I would like to listen to the rest of the group if you have any questions or any comments. Mr. Lemon, you had a comment.
It's become an issue around the country of separation of church and state. And so you, when you do that, you probably have somebody come in and complain.
Well, I, go mine. Actually, you guys do it. Look, everybody thinks it's a touchy subject. I actually don't. You know, I, I don't believe like some, and I believe like others, I guess. And for me, you know, G O D is good oriented direction. And I don't, I don't care if, you know, Lord Almighty, or whatever you individually believe in, I, I do believe exactly what you said, that, that this country was founded on a belief in a, a power that's higher than ourselves. And if you don't believe in something, you're going to fall for anything. You know, so I think that it's, it's a, it's the right direction. And, and for me, as, I'm pretty sure everybody else, I would defend that statement and allow anybody the opportunity or the birth to whoever their God is, or whatever their God is, in that particular God they trust also, as I do, so give me the same, or us the same latitude. But I do believe posting it, I don't think so, but absolutely I wouldn't run from it.
I won't say we're, we're not proposing, but unlike you both, I agree with both your comments, I wouldn't run from it either, but do we have to post it?
No, I think we proclaim it. We're going to proclaim it. I don't have an issue with that. Now, it may not be what you're physically wanting us to do. I know you had mentioned about posting it, but we've never posted anything as far as in our, in our meeting room over the several hundred years in, in good, bad, or indifferent. I'm happy to proclaim it, but I'm not, I'm not one in favor of actually posting In God We Trust in here. But I will proclaim it, and let's move forward with a proclamation to make that. We'll, we'll read it out and let it be proclaimed.
Whatever God they believe in.
That's right. Thank you.
I was going to say, I revert back to 2010 when I was with the school board, and I remember giving a speech. One of the things was told to me was, you're not supposed to use the word God in your speech and everything. And I remember all this because they said, there's other people that, that have religious backgrounds that doesn't use that. And I told them, I said, I'm a politician, religious, Christian, and I'm a school board member, so how would I handle this? And at the speech, I said, first of all, I'm going to thank God for this day. So I threw it in, they couldn't stop me. So the thing is, by proclaiming it and speaking what's on your heart, that you, you can't stop that or, or what's inside you. But as far as throwing it on somebody else that doesn't accept it, that's the part we're talking about. So I'm, I'm saying that because that was one of the things that I was putting, and they said, what did you just say? And I said, well, just want to take my word back and go on. So every speech from there, I made sure I used what was on my heart to, to... So every speech from there, I made sure I used what was on my heart to, to actually put "In God We Trust" or "In God" in my faith.
I thought you were going to say you sneezed, and so I'm saying, "God bless you."
No, I'm just saying that because there was other people that were of different faiths, and they didn't felt as though, when we do that, because of the school system, all different types of people in the school system. And it depended, so, but again, we've taken a lot for granted when people say, "Don't say this, don't say that, don't use this, don't..." It's what's on your heart to actually...
Well, I'm in favor of proclaiming it, and I think we all are. We'll proclaim it next week and go from there. You have a comment, or?
Yes, I do. I can understand some type of skepticism. Even the disciples who witnessed Jesus performing miracles had their doubts. When Jesus walked down on the water, and they were afraid, they thought he was a goat. And Peter said to Jesus, you know, "If you're the Lord, please command me to come to you." And the Lord said, "Come." Peter stepped out of the boat, and until he saw the waves and got afraid, he was fine, but Jesus saved him. So Jesus' comment at the time was, "Ye of little faith." But that's okay, because all it takes is a little bit of faith. There's also, I, I grew up in a religion where I was not encouraged to study the Bible, so I can't quote script, chapter and verse, but Jesus talked about the things that he did, and he said that we could do these things too, if we had as much faith as a mustard seed. Just a tiny mustard seed grows into a big plant that birds can plant in its branches. So what, to me, having this posted here is like planting a seed. God does not waste our faith, and somebody, someday, either a resident or a future commissioner will see that and be inspired by that. So I would add...
Yeah, but, and, and I agree with you, but, you know, everything when, what Jesus did in the Bible basically was a testament of faith. And I think, as Benny had said, here, it's, it's all individual, and I don't think you, you can proclaim it, but you don't have to post it.
Right.
If you understand what I'm saying, I could walk in here and I have...
Well, posting it would be a demonstration of faith, you know. To make people...
My, my job is not to proclaim any type of religion. My job is to help govern the town, and anything like that would be forcing a belief I do or do not have onto somebody else, and that's not what this arena is for, in my opinion. It's not. I have, I have a different perception of other, as others, and, and for me, I'm sorry about that. I do not want to force my views on somebody else. If they want to know my view, they can come and ask people. It's not in this arena.
Well, we're going to be happy to proclaim it. The next two items, the water sewer fees for nonprofit organizations, we had did a little bit more investigation, and we found that we had quite a few nonprofits, so we need to, we need to figure out how many of those nonprofits actually own the property, rather than just rent the property, to get a better understanding. So we're going to table that until the next meeting, if we're able to get all that information. And the last item on the agenda was the front foot assessment fees for existing properties. Normally, we charge front foot assessment fees when you're running the water and sewer lines in a neighborhood, and then there's a charge for, for that, that footage that is paid for by the developer before they build that house. Some cases, you'll have houses that are being annexed into the town, that don't have water and sewer, and we have to charge them a front foot assessment, and it's, it could come into thousands and thousands of dollars, and, and that infrastructure's been there for years and years and years. So we're going to table both of those items, because they're both in the same section of the, in our code book, and we'll have a little bit more information for everyone at the next meeting. With that, this meeting is adjourned.